Twenty-sixth, this meeting is being held in person. It can also be viewed on local cable channel thirteen oh three or on the internet by accessing bucksportmain.gov and selecting agendas and minutes and choosing this meeting and clicking on the video button next to the meeting. Questions or comments may be submitted during the meeting by emailing slassard@bucksportmain.gov or during the meeting by calling three zero seven zero three zero. And some feedback from the television audience, we will do our best to speak into the microphones. If you are going to be speaking in this meeting, please come up here and speak into the microphone as clearly. Please no speaking from your, from a seated position. Thank you. Next, our roll call, George.
Counselor Mark Easton.
Here.
Counselor Paul Gollan.
Here.
Counselor Tracy Hare.
Here.
Mayor Paul Bisnet.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Steve Bishop.
Here.
Counselor Ed Rankin.
Here.
Thank you. Next is presentation of any town council recognitions, not seeing any this evening. Next is consider minutes of previous meetings. We have our minutes from our September twelfth twenty twenty-four meeting. I will assume everyone's had a chance to review.
Motion approved.
Second. Questions? Holes in favor? Thank you. Receive and review correspondence. We have one item this evening, the Verona Police Call from September the fourth of twenty twenty-four. Questions on that? All right. Ordinances to consider introduce, not seeing any of those this evening either. Discussion items. The first discussion item this evening is the Infrastructure Committee Meeting update from earlier today. And that will be Counselor Eastman.
Yep, we met today and discussed new garage doors on the sand and salt sheds, uh, charlts shed, excuse me, and made a recommendation to approve. And we also discussed the animal shelter and made a recommendation to explore that alternative location.
And both of those will be, there'll be a resolve on the next meeting for the first item and for the discussion, I'm sure, our next meeting on the second item. Thank you. All right. And next will be an update from the Services Committee, Committee Meeting also earlier this evening. That's Counselor Rankin.
Uh, we just had two appointments, Planning Board Appointment, Patricia Caro and Board of Assessment Review Appointment for Suzanne DeFilips.
Great. We will consider those. The rate we're going here in just a minute or so. Next is the new camera location on the waterfront walk day and update on that.
Okay, the last time we met, we talked about how it would cost four hundred dollars to fix what we thought was not working. And our IT Director, Jim contacted me afterwards and said, I didn't, wasn't looking where you were looking when you, he was thinking of the, where the bridge goes over, not over where the fountain, under the bridge, he was thinking of the, the bridge that crosses the little stream that comes down.
Yeah.
And so the solution to the other one is more expensive. And the, the less expensive solution to that, um, which would be around a thousand dollars, puts the camera low enough so you can touch it if you're, well, I probably could, Jim could, some people might not be. But it isn't recommended to have cameras in that low. They're.
No, you get destroyed.
Hmm, they're, they're just to get destroyed. So the other one, the other cost is closer to six thousand dollars and would include, like our speed signs with the solar panel on it and that, that kind of thing to make the camera go. But, um, so I just wanted to let you know that what I thought would be quick and easy is neither quick nor easy. Um, of course, and that however, he does have a solution if you want to look at, um, going forward. It is possible to have it, a camera installed and connected. It would just be closer to six thousand than the four hundred dollars that we initially thought that it would be. And you can, um, put this in your coming year's work plan for, um.
Which side of the bridge would it be installed on?
The other side.
Hannaford side facing.
I believe the Hannaford side.
Facing us.
Yeah, looks like the Hannaford side from the picture.
Yes, from the, the picture's a little fuzzy, but it's the Hannaford side that the camera would be on. And the, the, um, the goal is to reduce vandalism, be able to, um, our Economic Development Director has had significant issues with that under that area and it's not currently cambered. Um, the, the positive thing is that we're going into the winter, so if you looked at doing it this next year, we could.
We could budget for it.
You could budget for it.
I think it's more than a vandalism thing though. It's, that's constantly getting washed out and eroded. It'd be nice to have eyes if we need it.
And there's constantly people under there. We've, we had, when I was with the police department, I would respond under the bridge often because people would be simply walking and we would have to go deal with drug activity or people drinking or crawling up in the beams and.
Oh.
It was, it was just a, it was a constant. So.
So anyways, I, I'm letting you know that it's not gonna happen for four hundred dollars this week. It's.
Six thousand next week.
Six thousand, no, not next week. It's, no, because it requires more, it requires a concrete pad, it requires some additional work beyond just redirecting the direction the camera's going and adding a few things.
It'd be wireless though.
What's that?
It'd be wireless though.
Yeah, well, it would, we can, um, so if you want, we can put this in the budget, um, for next year or if you decide you want it done in the spring, you can find a reserve account to take it out of.
So what do you need from us tonight?
I'm, I'm, this is information. I, 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 I told you one thing and that wasn't right. And I didn't do it on purpose. I didn't know that it was wrong when I told you.
I like the idea of the reserve account in the spring. Let's hope for the best.
Well, we certainly can do that. I'm just letting, what I didn't want you to say in a month is, where's that camera? Why are we still getting vandalism and me to say, oh, by the way, Jim said the information he initially gave me was for a different.
Yeah.
Area.
The little bridge, not the other little bridge.
Wrong bridge.
The big little bridge, yes.
Anyway, so we can, this is notification. I'll bring this back to you as we get closer to spring, so you can decide then which direction you want to go. Thank you.
It's gonna be a surprise too. Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
No, this was a, I, I gave you the wrong information. I need to give you the right information entirely.
Yep, thank you. Uh, let's see. Next is agenda items, of which we have none. Uh, we, but under resignations, appointments, assignments and elections, as promised, we have the Planning Board Appointment, uh, the Services Committee Recommendation of Tricia Caro. Hope the council will proceed.
Motion approved.
Second. Any questions? Holes in favor? Pools, you? And we have the Board of Assessment Review Appointment, uh, which is the recommendation of the Services Committee is Suzanne DeFilips.
Motion approved.
Second.
Questions? Holes in favor? You? Approval of quick claims, discharges and deeds. We do not have one this evening. We do have a town manager report.
Yes. I want to thank RSU twenty-five and Bucksport Public Safety and Dispatch for the quick and proactive response to the recent social media threat, not treat, threat at the high school. It is clear that the ongoing planning and training combined with a close working relationship between these agencies is key to responding to potentially serious situations. And the other person that deserves a great deal of, of recognition in this is the IT Director for RSU twenty-five. A combination of his IT experience and his public safety background was critical and, and, and the speed with which we were able to determine that this was not a credible threat. So, um, thanks to all of them for that work. It's unfortunate that this happens anywhere. I am, I am very proud of the work that they all did, uh, yesterday. As of this morning, the DEP has not had any new information submitted by Bucksport Mill LLC or Aim Demolition USA LLC in regard to petitions for dam abandonment. The five-town committee continues to meet to gather information related to the dams so that we can be prepared when or if a subsequent petition is received at the state level, which would also trigger the requirement for a local review process. Orland is having a special meeting, or has already had one, tonight, um, to consider a moratorium similar to what Bucksport did and is looking at ordinance development as well. Bucksport Mill LLC did not meet its September one deadline for covering waste and it is my understanding that a notice of violation will be issued by the DEP. On the good news front, the closure bond was increased from approximately ten million to fifteen million dollars and that has been completed. Um, the date for the closure plan to be submitted remains at November first, which is just a little over a month away. With the first half of property taxes due by August thirty-first, as of, um, yesterday, fifty-one percent of our property tax commitment had been paid, which is excellent. And I want to thank all the property owners who've done such a great job. The town has received two assessing proposals in response to our ad that was placed due to the resignation of our current assessor. I will be evaluating those, conducting interviews and hoping to make a decision within the next two weeks. So we should not be, um, without assessing services for any period of time, which is fortunate considering how hard assessors are to come by. We've also had a retirement in Public Works. Um, Colin Keith Burgess has submitted his resignation and, um, uh, Highway will be advertising for another employee to replace Keith before the winter season. Um, the ad to replace Jackie Hunt when she retires the position is supposed to both continue training for George, um, to become clerk and provide, um, someone to act as my assistant. So we have the opportunity to bring someone up to speed on my role and all the various issues and projects the town has going on. So there can be a smooth transition at the time I retire. We're going to be advertising that starting the end of this week. The council had desired, discussed its desire to ensure that there was a succession plan in place and it's my hope we're able to find a good fit for that position.
Where are you gonna advertise?
We're gonna advertise on the Maine Municipal Association website, which is where people in Maine who are looking to. Um, we also put it on our website and we put it in the local paper, but, um, we're asking for pretty specific.
Yeah.
Requirements in order to, um, be able to get Georgia's training to where it needs to be, uh, in order to take over that position. Oh, I'm not even, I'm back to the paper. This will be a candidate forum for local council and school board candidates on Monday, September thirtieth at seven thirty PM at Brown Hall, sponsored by The Enterprise and moderated by former Town Councilor Rob Carmichael. With seven council candidates, I encourage you all to attend or tune in to find out more about those who wish to represent you. I want to thank The Enterprise for continuing this annual event. It will be recorded and posted for rebroadcast. So, um, that's a lot of candidates for the three positions. So I think it would be very valuable if everybody tuned in or attended in order to hear what, um, all of our candidates have to, um, want to accomplish for the town of Bucksport. I think it's pretty exciting that seven people want to run. It's a, a great indication of the interest in participation in this community, which is one of the really good things about it. This is, not too long ago, we had six candidates running for three seats. So it's, it's not uncommon here. A lot of people want to be involved in, um, local government and that's a really good thing, so.
My first election was six people.
Yeah. And that's very unusual. There are many communities that can't get enough, can't field asleep to, to fill candidate positions. You know, they're, they're trying to do it on writings. It's, uh, not here.
Thank you. Any questions for the town manager?
I just have one question about the situation at the school. Does Reach School dismiss when the high school si- dismisses or is it just, was it just specific to that building, you know?
The, I don't know specifically. I know that the, the reported threat was only related to the high school and someone being there. I know that contact was made with other, I don't know if the Reach one, but the, the other schools went into the same, don't go into recess. Don't, you know, shut up the buildings, all those kind of things. But, uh, the only one that was evacuated was the one where the initial report was that it was an internal threat as opposed to an external.
I'll add to your statement because I picked up my daughter and the way it was handled was very, very well orchestrated. They were, even maintenance, maintenance crew, every, every staff member was one by one walking kids out, escorting them to their vehicle, making sure they knew who was taking them. It was done very quick and they did a really good job.
They, I think Dr. Trippett indicated that they were made aware of it at nine forty, something like that. And that everyone was out of the building by eleven fifteen. I think it was ele- it was by eleven something. So it was a very short window of time that they were able to do that. And in, in talking to him and to public safety, after it was, um, they had great cooperation from the social media platform on which this, um, threat was made. But the response wasn't quite quick enough to avoid having to let, having to evacuate the school.
Yeah.
That, that, they couldn't wait for the.
Best to be safe than sorry.
Absolutely. And, and so they, um, went with that and then found out after that, that, uh, it wasn't internal, it was external from a faraway place, so.
One more question for you. So on the landfill, notice of violation, what is that? Is there, is there a?
A notice of violation is a, uh, something issued to someone who doesn't meet, um, some portion of a requirement that the DEP has issued for them to do. And it, an NOB generally ends up with, they number one, have to do what they didn't do. But there's a monetary penalty that goes along with that. And that monetary penalty is determined by the nature of it, how long it's gone on. It, there's a whole formula that DEP uses for that. And those, it generally results in a consent, consent agreement between the violator and the department. Um, the work is done, the fi- the fine assessed and then interestingly enough ratified by the Board of Environmental Protection, which I chair, so I will.
I just wanted to clarify that there was more than just a notice. It's a penalty.
It's not just, hi, you did something wrong. No, there, there's a process for follow-up to that, yes.
All right. Thank you, Sue. Um, set public hearings and/or hold public hearings and approval of any licenses or permits. We do have a public hearing this evening on the General Assistance Ordinance, the updates from the state. I will open the public hearing. Questions from the council on that? Sue, do you have anything you want to add before, just to maybe also?
This is our, the annual, um, uh, limits that the state sets for each county for maximum amount allowed and the income lim- limits for people to be eligible for participation in the general assistance program. And it, and holding a public hearing and adopting these regulations are necessary for the town to be in compliance with that general assistance.
Questions from the public? Comments? Close public hearing. The council would like to proceed on that.
Motion approved.
Second.
Leave that motion in a second. Holes in favor? Pools? Next, is discussion of items not on the agenda for council and public?
I did have one for, uh, for this meeting with the Historical Society. Do we feel there's any benefit to establishing some, um, you know, making sure they're clear that there's some fundraising component to? I mean, like the, the animal shelter, we've always felt that they're gonna raise, there's gonna be a capital campaign. I'm not sure if that's realized by the Historical Society, but we're not gonna just do it all, correct? I mean, there's gonna be a fundraising. They're gonna have to raise some funds.
I would expect there to be, yes.
And also, I mean, do they clear if we're gonna, if we were to do something on that site, there would have to be ownership for the town?
Yeah, it's a bad decision for us to put actual money into things that we don't own.
Right, but I mean, if they don't agree to that.
Substantial money for.
Yeah, I agree.
Are you talking about having some discussion about?
What our expectations, you know, I mean, if we're talking this, even this project at five hundred and eighty thousand, I mean, are we, is the expectation they're gonna raise a substantial portion of that? And they're gonna do it before we lift the building up because I can't see lifting the building than trying to raise the money.
I think we'd have to ask for a fundraising plan before we did anything.
Scenarios and ownership goals are.
Well, I mean, there's some agreement that those are both components that, because I'm just not sure it's understood.
So perhaps, perhaps the beginning of your meeting on the seventh kind of.
Yes.
Go over.
Goes over the expectations and then sort of what goes from there.
Because if they say we don't want you to own it, then what are we discussing? I mean.
That is a great question.
Yeah.
Because we just keep going down this road and then, I mean, if that's not the case, then they don't want to do that, then we, they should look for Plan B. Yep.
Yeah, and I'd just like to hear about what their, their fundraising plan, like, I'm just putting my fundraiser head on. That's, it's a very lofty price tag, so I just would be curious to explore with them what, what their plan is for that and timeline.
And do you feel Tracy has somebody in that field that they could realistically look to grant fund the whole thing?
You know, the, the Historical Society grants locally ten thousand a piece. It's, it's, it's competitive. It's competing with a lot of human services stuff that's, you know, really at a pressure point.
Sure.
I think it would be very hard, um, that, and so I, I, I think, you know, I, I mean, I, I, and I, and I said this at the last meeting, I support sort of the idea. But now we're, I would like to get into the weeds of what the fundraising plan is because I feel like it's a very, um, I mean, we've started a cap, uh, but so trying to do a capital campaign is really difficult, um, in this economy. Phil, yeah.
And yeah, they have to be aware of what that means.
Yeah, yeah. So I'd just be curious what their fundraising plan is and I could certainly give some input to them as well, but it's a lofty goal.
So that's a place to start that conversation.
So when developing an agenda for the meeting on the seventh, perhaps both of those items should be.
Yeah.
At the beginning.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
Yep.
In the reality of it is, um, like the animal shelter is gonna get more and easier support because they're animals. It's just the way it is. The fundraising is not gonna be as easy as some, some ventures here, but.
Well, and what I heard from them is they have approximately the same funding they had when they first came to us six years ago. So there hasn't been.
Right.
Movement in that direction.
And I mean, we, when we talked to them in last, the last meeting, it was like, you would think they got the point, you know, what have you applied for? What have you looked at for, um, grants and, you know? That was kind of the point of grants and, but I kind of got the impression that their grant was the town.
Well, it's interesting because if, if it isn't on the register or if it isn't considered an historic building, it, and if, if it's eliminating, and this is where I'm sort of shifting, because if it's eliminating federal resources, then you are talking piecemealing private foundation grants and it's gonna be a huge mountain to climb because it's been moved. Um, and it wasn't, it wasn't clear on that, but because it's been moved, it may not be eligible for some of those bigger.
Well, and if we move it, I mean.
That's what I meant, yeah.
There's no if it move, you're going to move.
Okay, all right. So, but I'm just saying, once you take the federal money out of it, it's gonna be an even bigger mountain to climb.
And I would have a real struggle to say, okay, we'll pick it up and then try to get these grants because you could just have a building sitting there, not in any shape to be on Main Street and just waiting for something to arrive.
Yeah. I mean, I think we need to ask them, I, we, we need sort of a real, we basically need some bids, some quotes, sorry. Um, to, because there, there's got to be sort of an end game goal of how much it's gonna cost to do what they're asking. An up-to-date one, a current one, um, for them to even.
Well, in addition to that, there should be some kind of professional assessment of the artifacts and what's actually salvageable and what is gone and far.
Yeah, we, can we, we'll just put all of this on the agenda and, and, um.
Yeah, that prioritization, I think, of that is important. And I think just making sure we nail down some of the details. For example, as you, as most of you know, I love old pictures of Bucksport. I have a fairly decent collection. I'm not saying I'm an expert or that what I'm about to say is right, but I cannot find a picture where that railroad station is in a different spot. I have a map from a hundred and ten years ago that shows the railroad station in that spot. So, and plus on April the twenty-eighth nineteen seventy-five, I only remember because it was ten days after I was born. April twenty-eighth nineteen seventy-five, it received that national histor- that regu- the Historic Register, which means in all likelihood, unless a big error was made, it hadn't moved. So I think we, and we're not, and we're sitting here this evening having a conversation about, we're not even sure about that. And I think we need to be sure about that too, um, because I think that may change the landscape on, on grant funding and may, on any number of things. And we certainly want, we want to do anything to impact.
But even if it is, the plan is to move it.
Exactly. So maybe, maybe we come to a realization of if, yeah, if we move that building, this is what that means.
And then, you know, another part.
These fundings are gone.
Yeah. What is Plan B? I mean, if the goal is to save the artifacts, what, there has to be a Plan B besides.
Yep.
The same one we've done for six years.
Yep. Agreed. So anyway, yeah, I just, I think.
Yes, it's on the registry. You move that thing an inch, it no longer on the registry.
Right.
Then all of these fundings are gone and your only funding source is the town and.
And private philanthropy.
Or private philan- and it just, is it feet, is it?
And I think it would just, it would just be a terrible thing to make an assumption that that building has been moved and then to find out that in fact it hasn't and it's, you know, you see where I'm going with that. I'm not gonna belabor it except just to say, I think these are the things that we need to nail down with the folks from the Historical Society and make sure that they're aware of what the priorities are here. I think it's been really easy just to, to speak up for the council for a moment. It's been really easy to take a look at some of the questions that we've been asking and draw a correlation that we are not supportive of the Historical Society or the artifacts inside it. And I can tell you in individual conversations with everybody on this council, that is not true. We are very supportive of the Historical Society's mission. We are very supportive of making sure that every artifact that's in there is well preserved. But what we cannot support is just, and I'm not, I don't mean to characterize it this way, but what cannot happen is that money is just given to the Historical Society and we make a decision that twenty, thirty, however, maybe even five years from now, we're saying, what in the world are we thinking? Keeping that building there in prime real estate on Main Street in Bucksport for the purpose of being open a hundred hours a year. That may be the best use of that property, but I don't think it's out of the realm of, it's appropriate to make sure that we're asking that question and that it's justified. So I am gonna stick up for the council for a minute and say that because I think there's, there has been a lot of, or a fair amount, not a lot of, that we're against the Historical Society here and I can assure you that is not true, nor would, as one member, I wouldn't tolerate it. So I just want to say that aloud.
I've got a bunch of stuff for your agenda.
Good, perfect. Thank you.
That's the seventh, the seven.
That's the seventh, the seven...
Seventeen thirty, five thirty.
The seven thirty, five thirty.
Yep.
Not seventeen, I don't know, maybe seventeen thirty is five thirty, that's right.
It is. Seventeen days.
Yeah.
That's what I wrote down, so that's what I said.
Three meetings that week.
Never goes away.
Thanks, Rich.
That keeps us out of trouble. Uh, any other comments from the council? Questions from the public?
All right.
Uh, next is upcoming public hearings, designation of topics for committee assignment and scheduling of committee meetings. Uh, prior to our next meeting on the tenth, do we need, other than the meeting we've already talked about on the seventh for the Historical Side, do we need any other meetings, committee meetings before our next regular meeting?
I may need a meeting to talk, for services committee, to talk about um, how to address facility needs, you know, a facility person or however we're gonna structure it so that our um, right now we're piecemealing things to death and, and unfortunately, I don't think we're getting a good overall picture of the condition of all of our facilities and we're, to be honest, running our community and economic development director into the ground in, with these, and that's not his job. He's taken all these things on and he's done more and so he continues to do that, but he's putting in extraordinarily high number of hours as a result, and many times it takes him away from where his best efforts can help the community move forward. And I didn't discuss it with Rich before I discussed it with you, because I can hear him in my mind saying, oh, it's all right, but it isn't, because it's, it's not in the best interest of town for, for that to be as big a portion of his life as it is. And, and it, it doesn't benefit facilities-wise either. We're pulling people from all sorts of departments. We've, we have for a year taken two people out of Highway from spring through late fall entirely. They've mowed Oak Hill, they've done the waterfront, they've, they've fixed the, they've, they've done things that took them away from highway projects that then don't get done, because we don't have enough people to... Because summer is when people can take vacations, because you can't take them in the winter, because we have to plow snow. So it's a, I'd like to have a conversation with the council about, just on looking at what we're doing with our, all of our people and how we could structure this that gave a facilities person, um, it gave Highway back their people and had facilities handled um, without turning our econo- community economic development director into facilities as well, because that, that's where we are.
He's not a carpenter.
He's not a carpenter. No, he's not a carpenter, but, but the, it's, he and I have discussed this. Every time he's running out to check something on the waterfront or that was under the bridge or that was, you know, we need to go get two more people from High, it, it, it's just, it's not an efficient way to run it. And I'm, we've done it because we've, we have evol- we're evolving. We're evolving and we, we're a one foot in front of the other kind of thing, and I'm not looking to... You know how hard it is for me to add people. It, I am the last one on the plane for that kind of thing. I don't do it well. But when you get to the point where your organization is losing efficiency and losing opportunities because you've got people doing things that are, they are better suited and would more, better benefit the town if they had those opportunities, I, I think we at least need to talk about it, um...
Who does, who does HR for the town, or do you do all the interviews?
No, um, Rachel Wilson does HR, um, which is, she does HR, but the, the... What are we doing questions end up here, and, and as I said, we've, this has been a growing issue, because the needs of things have grown in terms of what we do.
Do we have, and you're gonna kill me, but do we have a, like an org chart, like a, you do?
Oh, absolutely, we do.
Good.
I, I provided it to the council candidates in our little, you know, this is...
Oh, I read it for sure.
Sounds it.
No, no, it, it, well, it's...
It's in the town report, too.
It's in the town report, too.
Okay, I just, I need a visual, so...
But it, it, it is, and, and I'm not even sure that's the best way to run this ship, the way it's currently structured with all of that. But I, I'm thinking about these kind of things because in a little more than a year, I'm not gonna be here. And whoever is here should have an organization that's set up to run, function. I've grown into this over ten years. We, we started somewhere and we're here now and sort of riding the ship a little bit in terms of that organization will benefit the town, it will benefit whoever my successor is. And I, I, I don't believe the next person having to fight with Rich about working a hundred hours a week, because he's down on the waterfront, because there's been another something, and this is not to pick on Rich. I, I'm just, it's an example. There are other examples of employees who are in the wrong place doing the wrong stuff, because there's nobody else to do that right then. So um, it, I'm not, I, I am not talking about a hundred people. I'm not talking about, I'm talking about a little reorganization and some, you know, someone with facilities responsibilities so that we can more effectively manage our properties and keep them in better shape than, instead of responding to the bricks fell off the chimney. Chimney needs to be replaced, you know, that we...
Proactive, so, proactive and reactive, yeah.
Proactive instead of reactive, which, we're reacting right now. I, I don't like it.
I'm for anything that helps Rich.
So are we gonna do that October tenth?
I, I, if you're okay with that, I would like to have a conversation.
Yeah.
Sure.
And it doesn't have to be at five thirty. If we could, if we came in at six, that would be, that's the only meeting we'd have.
How many things you have to talk about? Maybe four.
October tenth, you said?
Six.
Got it.
Okay.
This is...
Yes, it's gonna take out.
I actually, I, I, we hadn't spoken about this, but I'm, I'm very much in favor of this type of review. If you don't know, I, this is what I do for a living, for a workforce of about three hundred and fifty people is staffing. And so what we're, what we're looking at here is, to pick on Rich some more, he's at a hundred percent utilization and he's also a single point of failure. He also has a lot of tenure. That is a recipe for disaster if Rich were to get sick. If something that Rich can't control were to happen, you would have to replace him with somebody who has, does not have the institutional knowledge nor the tenure to do the work. You would have to, it would probably take at least two people to replace him, because he's doing, he is overutilized, meaning more than a hundred percent of the time, he is doing work that is his job plus others. And anybody that, with any common sense, when you build a staffing model like that and you have people overutilized, that when you look at their primary role, that tends to fall by the wayside. So I, um, this is my world.
He's all excited.
This is my world, I do the, yeah. Um, and I can tell you that healthy organizations do this regularly. So um, it's almost like we talked, when you were talking, I was like, it's like we talked about this. So anyway, no, I think this, we'll stop picking on Rich, because I think looking at everybody across the board and taking a look at the additional work that's happening that it, that goes above their primary role would be a, a very interesting exercise for the entire organization. I think, I think we'll be surprised.
Well, as I said, if we can, if we can put Highway back in Highway, then Highway can do the projects that have been put off or, or slowed down, because we haven't had enough bodies, because they're...
They're moving a cemetery that is really impossible to mow.
That's the, that's where they are for eleven hours, for two hour, two of them every other week, yes.
It's like...
Anyway, well, thank you. We, we can have a, I, you don't have to do any, but I, I do think it would be healthy to have a discussion about looking at the situation and see if there's a better way that we can...
Yeah, I think it would be, I think it would be helpful, especially with like the position that's going online tomorrow and then the tax assessor and to get it all sorted out.
Lots of moving pieces at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that the only meeting, uh, meeting?
I hope so.
All right. Uh, next item is adjournment.
motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?